As usual, this meeting is being recorded, may be broadcast or rebroadcast at Westford Cat. Everybody is, well, we're all here with Bob on the phone. So we'll take the votes by roll call. Start with open forums, gentlemen.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Anybody on the board?
Nope.
Anybody in the audience? If there's any none, we'll go to our first public hearing for PB 2534 to 400 Littleton Road. I get a motion to waive the meeting. If they ever say aye, aye, Bob. Bob, you with us?
Bob, you IP muted.
Well, Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Cheryl Gould, attorney in Littleton Miss, representing Kimball Farm. To my right, I have Brian Trudel, who is the engineer, who's going to make the presentation tonight. And behind me, I have Brad Kimball, who's one of the Kimball family, who's one of the owners. And beside him is Mike, and Mike is part of the construction team, or the head of the construction team. And I think the application was pretty comprehensive, and your staff report was very thorough.
Attorney, would you mind speaking up a little bit?
Sorry. The application was fairly comprehensive, and the staff report was very thorough. This is not the first time we've been before you, so I'll spare you the details of our long history.
Thank you, Cheryl. Again, for the record, Brad, good job with Hancock Associates. So we're out here on behalf of Kimball's. And what they're looking to do is construct an arcade and restaurant building. It's a two-story timber-framed structure. Now, if you recall, back in 2023, we were before this board for not dissimilar of an idea, right? It was an arcade and sawmill museum up front where the arcade tent currently is. Well, they built a good portion of the museum, and then, I don't know, I guess ideas changed a little bit, and they're looking for a fresh start on the arcade. So where this is located is towards the back by where the batting cages are and the large dirt parking lot. So if you, yeah, there we go. I'm just getting my bearings, too. So the, there we go. So the area in question is right here. This is the spin zone, and then this is the gravel parking lot. There's the batting cages, the zip line is right down here. I don't know, maybe I should be pointing on that one. But basically, the intent is to keep the gravel parking area for future amenity space. And that's the 25,000-square-foot area that's called out on the plans. And then the arcade building itself is to be constructed right at the edge of the wood line, and then a new parking lot just beyond that. So this is all within that forested upland area in between the access drive and the existing parking lot. So that's kind of bearings on where we are. So generally speaking, the proposed construction area is woodland. It's going to be cleared topographically. Looking at the aerial, the entire site slopes from the bottom or south to the north or the top of the screen. So it all just kind of gently flows, stormwater gently flows down towards where the existing gravel parking area is. We had conducted soil testing out there, so we understand groundwater conditions as well as texture. One of the unique kind of characteristics of this portion of the Kimball site is there's very, very high groundwater. Everything that we have for proposed development is upland. However, the stormwater management facility, which will be located page left of the access road, that's kind of in this general area, which is, you can't see it at all, which is in the kind of green treat area. That is within wetland buffer. So we will be filing a notice of intent with the commission in short order. So just another piece of the permitting puzzle to be aware about. So what we've done is we're trying to recreate the parking that's out there that's going to be replaced with amenity space, and then provide additional parking for the restaurant. Because the arcade already sits on site, we're essentially relocating that. We don't consider that to be an increased parking demand. There's 106 spaces in that gravel parking lot right now. We're replacing that with 106 spaces, and then an additional 84 spaces. So that additional 84 spaces corresponds to about 252 seats within the restaurant. The staff report kind of indicated that that, for clarity, exactly how the calculation is broken down, and then up for a topic of discussion with the board because the zoning basically defers determination of the parking requirements for a restaurant to you. So 12,000 square feet, two-story timber-framed structure, restaurant and arcade. The arcade building itself, very similar to last time. Arcade on the ground floor, kind of function space upstairs. This location will have a basement, and that basement is strictly for staff and storage and servicing of the arcades and whatnot. Now, the parking lot itself kind of creates this large loop around the perimeter. So the access drive to the east essentially continues along the front of the proposed building, and then loops around to the south of the parking lot, and then ties back into the access road itself. So that was very important for, you know, larger vehicles, buses, deliveries, things like that, as well as fire department access so that they can get around. We don't have to worry about turning maneuvers. One of the comments within the staff letter was if we had met with the fire chief, we had not yet, but we will be, and we have done the sweatbath analysis to support that conversation. So getting into the, that's the loop on the outside. The 190 spaces themselves are broken up into specific drive aisles, if you will, and each one of those drive aisles is separated by large landscape islands. So we got about 15 feet from curb to curb in between every row of parking. And we did that for two reasons. One, so that we could landscape it with significant plantings and trees and things like that. And two, it assists us with our stormwater collection. So all of these paved areas are going to sheet runoff, stormwater runoff when it runs into those islands to be treated with the vegetation, and then collected ultimately with catch basins, and then sent off to an infiltration basin. And that was the area I'd indicated to the west or the right of the access drive itself. All of our handicap parking spaces are located up by the building. The entire parking lot, again, with a high groundwater elevation, we went with a little bit of a more remote stormwater system, it being across the drive-out because we couldn't capture and treat and recharge stormwater underneath the parking lot, which is typically what we like to do because groundwater was simply too high. So finished grade and existing grade are going to be about the same as what it is right now. And then, again, we're going to collect stormwater through the landscape islands, treat it, and then ultimately infiltrate it and discharge it towards the wetlands. We have submitted a landscape plan, a lighting plan, and then also architecturals were sent in today. They missed the original submission package, so my apologies for that. But that gives you a floor plan along with elevations of the structures themselves, which will give you an idea of what this is going to look like. What Joe's picking up right now, that's the rear elevation, I believe, the north elevation. And then down at the bottom page, this is the southern exposure. This is what's facing the parking lot. So the main entrance is right in the center of the building for the arcade. We have a secondary entrance off to the right. That's for the restaurant and the little cafe that's in there. And then there's going to be a covered patio, followed by outdoor seating on the opposite side of the building. Those are service doors to access the basement, and that's strictly for staff and deliveries. So with, I guess, one of the key points to the amenity area being in that existing parking lot, that will be closed off upon construction of the building from vehicles. So vehicles won't be able to go beyond where the building is. So that really will be just a closed amenity space. If you think about what the batting cages are like right now, with the courtyards surrounded by buildings, very, very similar. We don't have definitive design on that area. Just know that it's going to be features not unlike what's already out there. There was talk about carousel, things like that, just to kind of expand the amenities that are being offered. In the staff letter, there are a handful of comments here. I don't think that there's anything that we won't be able to address. I believe I clarified a number of the questions that were asked within that during the presentation. We will be responding to the staff letter with our first revision. Our expectation is not to close this evening and render a decision. The first comment in the letter was asking for a site visit, which obviously we can accommodate at the board's convenience if you would like to do that. Other than that, I'd really just like to understand, you know, any big concerns that are out there. Schedule the sidewalk if the board would like to do that, and I'll answer any questions if I'm able to. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need to vote to open the public hearing. I don't think we did that, so if you have a motion, go over the public hearing.
Second.
Hold it in favor, Bob, are you there? Joni?
Aye.
I say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Great. Joe, obviously, this house has got anything back from engineering yet.
No, yet, Mr. Chair. So they are reviewing it, but they haven't completed their comments yet.
All right. I'll go to Bob. You have any initial comments, questions, Bob?
Yeah, more for the board than them on the first comment, and that is, on the staff report, I noted that it discussed the seasonal recreation activities for the parcel, but it didn't discuss the year-round country store. And I think that's important to note when we talk about this new function being added to that property. So I did mention this to Joe this morning, so that that could get changed. For the applicant and us, I would like to understand what the periods of use, what the hours of operation are planned to be for this new use of the property.
The applicant is expecting it to be year-round use. Probably initially it won't be, but eventually it will be. And they don't expect it to be open much later than 10:00 PM. That's pretty much when the farm starts to close at 9:00, and everyone's cleared out by 10:00. There's no reason to keep it open later than that.
Thank you.
My other last comment, Mike and the planning board, is I just want to make sure we understand the applicant that in the event this new application goes through and gets approved, that the previous approval we gave for the similar project, I guess, is going to be rescinded, is not going to be acted upon?
That's correct with the following requests or caveats. First of all, we've already done some of the conservation requirements under that original order. We traded off some expanded areas with Conservation Commission with limiting some areas across the street. We've done that already. We're not going to have that part rescinded or ask for it to be rescinded. And the second part is, we want to keep available the possibility of reusing the platform in some capacity in the future if we have another building that we're proposing. Right now, we've been batting around the idea of a potential skating rink or a public feature around the holiday time that might be coupled with Christmas tree sales or lights. So rescinding on the arcade building per se is not a problem, but I don't want to give up the platform location nor the sawmill renovations that we've already started, if that's fair.
I think 100%. I mean, I think if you came back with those anyway, I mean, it would be an issue to begin with. But just you're not acting on that, you haven't pulled a permit for that other building.
That's correct, and we don't intend to.
So I don't have a problem with that, but I would like to make sure that these caveats are documented so that when we get to the final approval, all of this is self-nominated.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
That's it, that's all I have, Mike. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Joni?
My only first question was what is happening with PB 2319. So Bob's already addressed it, so we've got that covered. Thank you for this extra, because a lot of my questions have not been answered, so that makes it go a lot quicker. The one thing that isn't answered is, I see the paved driveway and trying to envision where that connects to 110.
For the area of the shop.
Sure.
So if you look at the area, I don't know if the laser works yet.
The work on the TV works on the screen.
I mean, if you look behind you. So this is the access drive here.
Okay.
Right there.
Oh, okay.
It exists today. This is the wastewater treatment facility, and that's how you access this back gravel parking lot. So all of that remains open. We're essentially going to be developing this wedge right in here and then tying back into the access drive.
Okay, so my question is, isn't a lot of that a gravel drive?
Portions of it are.
Are, okay.
Portions of it are.
So is the tent, if you're going to use it in the winter, are you going to pave it or are you going to try to keep it gravel?
So right now, we don't have a proposal to repave it. If we do, a lot of that does fall within conservation jurisdiction, so we'd have to file with them to do that.
Okay. Okay, that was it, thank you.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. So this is replacing the existing arcade building and the cooking area up front with the tent?
No. Those areas will stay open and functioning.
The cooking area will stay.
Yep.
The arcade area right now is a tented structure and not a building.
Okay.
That will be replaced.
Yep.
And the proposed PB 20919 was for an arcade building structure similar to this one. That would go away.
Yep.
So where the tent is with the arcade, that's the piece that's getting replaced. That's the application. Everything else is going to remain consistent.
Okay. So do you consider this, so this is new? This is not replacing anything or optimizing it?
So it's the relocation, well, I mean, the arcade exists right now. So we're relocating the arcade, and then we're adding a restaurant on top of that.
Okay. The restaurant's casual dining, walk-up dining, need a reservation dining?
No casual, I believe.
Yeah.
It might be like pizza, it might be parties, kids' parties or teen parties.
Okay.
That's what we envision right now. Maybe it would, maybe it would be brew pub.
Yep. Okay.
Depending on the crowd.
Yep. I'm just trying to get a sense for overall parking of the overall site, because there's a lot of parking on the site already, and it's sort of scattered and somewhat, you know. I don't want to say it's unclear, but you've got people parking at one part of the facility and then just naturally making their way through it, and now they're sort of in a different location. So I was trying to get a sense for whether or not this parking that you're proposing could maybe replace or eliminate the need for some other parking. It sounds like you don't think so because it's an additional parking bank. I guess one thing I wouldn't mind seeing as we progress these conversations in general, I don't have a problem with the proposal, would be to make it clearer on what parking areas are for what, right? Because, so you have this newer parking area in the back. Are people parking there who aren't even taking advantage of that restaurant? They're just happening to park there, and now they're making their way in, and they're actually going up to the ice cream stand, and then they're going to go hit some balls, right? So, you know, to me, it's, it would just be nice at some point if the parking at Kimball's was a little more organized around the activities that they're closest to to encourage folks who are coming to the location to pick the right parking spot that makes sense for the activity that they want to use, I guess. I know that that's a big ask, and some people are just going to park. When it gets busy, it gets busy. People are going to park where there's a spot, right?
Right.
But anything we can do with signage or anything like that, and wayfinding and stuff to try to direct traffic to the right spot based on what they're looking to do would be an improvement. I think we'll just make the whole place better for everybody, right? And try to put the parking closest to where, to the activity that they want to at least start their day at Kimball's.
All makes a lot of sense. The issue is corporate parties would have naturally park in that big parking lot.
Yeah, and they kind of go there anyway.
Use the entire facility. They go there anyway.
Yeah, we've done corporate, I mean, my company has done them there. You always go down the back to park. And you guys usually have signage out for those things, so that makes total sense.
And then in-season, the school events and the school buses all are directed to that area.
Yeah.
And then if that arcade is open off-season, off the Kimball season, parking would obviously be there because there wouldn't be anybody else. They're using it, and that's the closest to the building.
Yeah.
So I think it will naturally be what you want it to be. I'm not sure it needs to be excessively signed.
Yeah, okay. The only other comment that I'll have, and you don't have to dig into this now, is just given, there's been a number of other approvals in that area for different large facilities, large concentrations of motor vehicle traffic. Since this is like a new sort of expansion of the use, I don't know how we feel about thinking about the additional, if there's additional traffic coming to the site because there's an additional amenity, whether or not we need to think at all about, you know, some sort of a lightweight traffic study or something just to try to understand that in the context of what we know is happening in Littleton, at the King Street property, and what we just recently heard on the other side on Power Road. We just know that this is an area that's going to see increased traffic, right? Based on, based on the stuff, so.
Maybe throw that caveat to engineering with them. Chew it over?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have engineering's comments, so if they, you know, it's just.
Certainly raise the question.
Yeah. Just mention that, you know, given the context of other things that are going on and being approved, would bring a lot more traffic to the area. I don't know how we think about this with, you know, the increase of traffic. If it was replacing stuff that was already there, I'd say it's not an increase in traffic, right?
Yep, yep. Makes sense.
Okay, that's all I got.
Darren?
Yeah, I think a sidewalk could be really helpful because I'm having troubles sort of visualizing the finished restaurant where it is now compared to that current gravel, existing gravel lot where, like, I go over there to the driving range, I park in that lot.
Yep.
It's convenient to walk over to the driving range or the, you know, batting cages.
So would that entire lot be gone, or are there still spaces over there for folks that want to use those facilities? So that entire lot that you see on the screen right now, that is the proposed amenity space. That's the 25,000 square feet. From the edge of the tree line towards where the driveway is, that's going to become the building and the new parking lot. And those 106 spaces that the existing gravel parking lot have are essentially just relocated a little bit further up slowly.
Sort of to the right of the restaurant in that picture right there. So, yeah, so you park further away, walk past the restaurant to go to use the other.
To batting cage, yeah, exactly.
We could walk through it and gamble, but.
Yeah, it's a casino, but.
So, okay.
So, yeah, I'm just thinking, if you're not sure on the proposed amenity site, maybe try and consider leaving some of the spaces down there closer to the batting cage and the driving range so people don't have to walk all the way down there, but just something to keep in mind.
I think the intent would be to leave those until we start identifying the amenities, and then we would look at that again.
And then my other, I guess my question, too, kind of on Dylan's point. If that, the current site right now where the tent is, right?
Up front.
Could that be used as parking? Although you want to save that for future use. Yeah, no, just, I think the sidewalk would be helpful to give you a little context here. Other than that, I'm good.
All right, great. So Attorney Gould, if we could have staff reach out to organize that sidewalk with you? I think that would be great. I don't have any other comments. Anybody in the audience want to bring up anything, any discussion? Engineering, have any type of timeline, Joe? To continue this, too?
January 5th would provide good time for them to provide comments to the applicant and allow them to be able to respond in time for that meeting. So January 5th would be preferable.
Is that amenable, Attorney Gould?
That's fine. Also, Mr. Kimball offered to have staff reach him directly for a sidewalk.
Okay, great.
Then he can arrange it with his dad, and you don't have third-party communication going. I'll attend it, but he can figure out time with him.
So having said that, Jen, I have a motion to continue. Bob, you have anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Motion to continue PB 2534 to our meeting January 5th, 7 o'clock in this room.
Second.
All those in favor say aye, Bob.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren? And I say aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, our next item is PB 2533, 37 West Street. The applicant has requested continue without discussion to our meeting on December 15th.
I'll move to continue PB 2533 to our meeting in two weeks, yeah?
Yeah, 15th.
That's December here at 7:00 PM, meeting room 201.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor say aye, Bob.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Moving on, we have a request for extension of time for the sidewalk at the old joke yard, PB 1832, 19 Littleton Road.
Yeah, this one's come up a couple times. The work has been done. They made some adjustments based on Mastad's initial comments. Now they're just waiting for the final okay, so that way they can then file a certificate of compliance to the Conservation Commission and close everything out. The timing is such that they're not totally sure they'll make it by January 7th, especially given the Conservation Commission meeting that they probably have to apply for at this point is for January 10th. So they said, you know, in abundance and caution, for some reason Mastad still had questions, and they then had to wait till spring to address because of the season now. Maybe just do a year extension, just add to the presence of caution would be the request here.
I'd agree with a year. Any discussion, Bob?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Anybody else? I get a motion to extend the, to extend the time for completion, construction of the sidewalk on Littleton Road, 19 Littleton Road, and the extension of the bond till.
So this would be the January 7th, 2027.
January 7th, 2027?
Second.
All those in favor say aye, Bob.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. PB 253.
Sorry, I'm mic on that one, just clarifying here. So this says the 2026.
That's when the bond currently expires.
So this is going to be extended for a year.
It's so they can, yeah, extended.
To make sure we're, yeah, good, yeah.
PB 2535, approval not required, 64 Beaver Brook Road, dividing one lot into three. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. Thanks for having me. It's been a while since I've been before you folks. I think a fairly straightforward one here, other than the fact that we have a situation where we have land with frontage in Westford and in the bulk of the, of the land in Littleton. So this is a little bit of a, we have to go for both Littleton planning board and your board. But essentially, we have a lot, 64 Beaver Brook Road, existing house. It's, I think the lot apparent as exists today is about 10 acres. Looking to subdivide into three lots. We'd have Lot 2, which is right in the middle, would contain the existing house, approximately 3.34 acres in total, including the parcel in the front along Beaver Brook in Westford and the parcel in Littleton. And then we'd be creating two reduced frontage lots in the back. Again, both of those lots have frontage in Westford with the bulk of the property in Littleton. So we prepared this plan to comply with both your regulations and Littleton's regulations, whichever is more conservative. We did go back and forth one time with your staff on Lot 3. We had inadvertently, we had the frontage correct, but we did not have the lot width at 50 feet back from the road. We needed to have that frontage maintained 50 feet back. So we did do a, this plan is the revised plan before, but we had one previous iteration after staff reviewed it. So that is all.
Great. Any comments, Joe?
Just that we did get this reviewed by town council, and they did say it would be entitled to endorsement from the board.
I was looking at Littleton's online GIS. I think that is a lot of undeveloped land. I didn't realize that the farm backs up to that.
Where is it?
Springdale Farm on 119, that's all, that's up behind it. Bob, any questions or comments?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to understand, looking at the plan, it looks like on Lot 2 and the Littleton portion, there is a wetland that traverses it north to south, right behind the. the existing dwelling. Is that correct?
That is correct. It actually traverses all three of the lots.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I see parcels at other places, too. Yeah, yeah. But what I noticed was when it was trying to be denoted to traverse Lot 3, it doesn't look like the notation was completed. It does not have part of the, I guess, the easterly side of that wetland denoted on our plan.
Correct, yeah. I think really, we're not proposing any work over there. Actually, all of the, we've permitted a shared driveway with Littleton planning board to access those two lots through the Lot 1 frontage. So we focused our wetland designation on that side. So, yeah, we, we're short a flag, I guess, over there on the northerly side, but it just, it kind of just, the trajectory, I believe, is the same, yeah, that same direction there. You may be not be able to see that, Bob, on the screen, but I think if you were to keep that, those lines, if you were to extend those, that's generally what you're, what you have for a wetland on Lot 3.
And so I'm gathering that the intent is to create these hammerheads so that Lots 1 and 3 each have a private driveway out to Beaverbrook Road?
Well, we're actually, while Lot 3 would have its legal frontage through that area, we're actually proposing to access it through Lot 1, through a shared driveway, as it's called in Littleton, across Lot 1.
Okay, so my concern really is, are there other parcels that would want to have easement through these lots from Littleton? Or is this the sole access that's being requested to access Beaverbrook Road?
This is the sole access. There would be no other proposed access.
Okay.
We looked at trying to get a fourth lot in the back, it just, there's not enough area, so. And there's no, you know, the, we're not proposing any access to the adjacent property further to the west.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You bet.
Joni?
Oh, no, nothing, thank you.
Dylan?
Nothing from my side, thanks.
Darren?
Nope, as long as town council is good with it, domain R, yeah.
All right, can I get, oh, let's start a public hearing. Motion to endorse PB 2535, 64 Beaverbrook Road, IR, with no determination of zoning.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, Bob.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
We have two minutes and no correspondence unless anybody has anything else. Bob?
Nothing else.
All right, I want you to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye, Bob.
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Say aye, thank you.